Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission Order. If we'd all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice alone.
And I'd like now to introduce the members of the Commission that are here this evening. To my far right is Commission Member Jeff Kohan. To my immediate right is James Fitzsimmons. To my left is J. P. Benoit, Vice Chairperson of the Commission. At the table to my left is Cynthia Kleist, who is our Recording Secretary. Next to Cynthia on the outside position is Casey Costello, who's our Town Planner. And I'm Jim Saitter. I'm the Chairperson of this Commission. Our first order of business would be for approval of our minutes for our meeting of June 12, 2017. Any Commission Members with any corrections, additions to the minutes? Cynthia, I just have just one very minor one. On page 14, the first full paragraph, on the fourth line up for the bottom, it says, well, it starts out Chair Saitter, well, actually it starts out property line, then it says Chair Saitter said he would like to see additional landscaping, but is looking at the site. Actually, I looked at that and I read it again. I think it's fine. Somehow, when I looked at it before, I said, this makes absolutely no sense that I said this, but apparently it did. Anyway, sorry about that. Any Commission Members with any corrections, additions? If not, I entertain a motion on the application, excuse me, on the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the minutes that the June 12 meeting has submitted.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Kohan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed and abstentions?
Me.
And Mr. Benoit abstained. He was not at the meeting. All right, we're going to go first to an old business item. It's number six. It's a site plan modification for parking reconfiguration for Adams Landing Property Development at 90 South Turnpike Road. That's also linked to our first item on our agenda, which is a public hearing, which is a re-subdivision. But the advice of our Town Planner, she had indicated that we should go to this item first, the site plan modification. So if the applicant would please come forward to begin preparing for his or her presentation. And Mr. Fitzsimmons, if you would please note all correspondence for the record.
Mr. Chairman, legal notice, the Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission will hold the following public hearings at their meeting of Monday, July 10, 2017.
We don't need that. That's number six.
You said we're starting with six.
Oh, that's number one. Sorry.
Correspondence was sent from this office on June 29, 2017, addressed to Adams Landing Property Development from the Town Planner. Correspondence was received from the Wallingford Fire Marshal dated 5/10/17 regarding this application. Correspondence was received from the Wallingford Inlands and Wetlands and Watercourses Commission from the Environmental Planner dated April, excuse me, March 13, 2017. And that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Fitzsimmons. Just for the benefit of the applicant, as you can see here today, we have four members of the Commission. Normally, we have five members. So with the four members, for an affirmative voter and approval, you would need three of the Commission Members to approve the application. So I'll give you the option, if you would like to, you know, make your presentation this evening with the four members, or if you would like to postpone till the following month and wait till there's five members. It's clearly your option.
I'd like to go forward.
If you could please use the microphone, sir. And it should be a switch that you could simply just turn on. Yeah, there should be a button in some way.
Good evening. My name is Rob Sonnix, and I'm a Registered Professional Engineer with Waldo and Associates. I'm here representing the applicant tonight. And I would like to go forward with the application.
Okay, good. And before we ask you to begin your presentation, again, this is a modification to a special permit. So I would ask the Commission Members, based upon the modification, if they feel what's being asked would, you know, raised to the standard where it should be a public hearing, given the changes that are being asked or being requested on the application. I think that was probably the appropriate thing to do. Casey, is that correct?
Yeah, if you feel that it impacts the special permit itself, which is the use component of the application, or what would be permitted as part of that use component, then it would be a change to the special permit. If it's site modification only, then it's site plan modification. So if it doesn't actually impact the uses themselves, or what you might permit for the uses.
Good. Thank you. So I guess as far as the Commission Members, any comments from my perspective? I don't believe, in my mind, it, you know, rises to the situation where it should be a public hearing, and where there's significant, you know, modification to the plan that, you know, affects the building itself and what's being proposed. So other Commission Members with comments?
Agree.
I agree.
In that case, again, if you'd just please reintroduce yourself and begin your presentation, please.
Good evening. My name is Robert Sonnix. And I'm a Registered Professional Engineer in the state of Connecticut. I'm a principal with Waldo and Associates. We're located in Guilford, Connecticut. And we are the consulting engineers for the managing members of the property known as Adams Landing Property, located at 76 to 90 South Turnpike Road. I'm sure everybody knows where it is. It's essentially directly across the street from the Oakdale Before I forget, and I may, is it okay if I, Casey, is it okay if I give you the public notices for the public hearing? I know that this is, I was, everybody said, do it right By the way, this is, I was sitting in my office this afternoon trying to figure out how best to make the presentation. The subdivision is incredibly tied and based on issues related to the site plan development. So we go through the site plan development, and then it will make sense what the subdivision looks like. It would be a little bit hard to give all the background. And so this is the logical way of proceeding. And I'll be as brief as I can be. In January 2011, a site plan for what was called Phase One at this property was granted by the Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission. That project included demolition of five existing buildings on the site and all the existing pavement. It also included construction of a three-story mixed-use building that's about 4,400 square feet of office space on the first floor. And the approval was for 12 two-bedroom apartments. The project was constructed, the building was constructed, but some of the aspects of both the inland-wetlands approval and the planning and zoning approval were not completed. Things such as dumpster enclosure was shown on the approved site plan. There is no dumpster enclosure. There's simply a dumpster. The storm drainage system was not completed as it was shown on the approved plans. And there were a few other matters related to both planning and zoning approval and the wetlands approval. There was, the Wetlands Commission had approved a landscape planting along the Oakdale Brook, and that wasn't completed. Oakdale Brook cuts across the property from South Turnpike Road and leaves the property and flows under Merritt Parkway into the Quinnipiac River. It divides the site sort of in, one-third of it is on the south side, which is where the existing building is located, and two-thirds roughly are on the north side, and they're undeveloped. They used to have some cabins on them, but they are, they're gone. When the building was constructed, the only change that was really made to the approved uses was that two of the apartments on the second and third floor were changed from two-bedroom apartments to one-bedroom apartments. So there are 10 two-bedroom apartments and two one-bedroom apartments. And that's what all of our calculations are based on. In early 2016, there was a change in the ownership and management of the property. Our client became the managing member and requested us to review the regulatory status of the property and to move it into complete compliance with the conditions of approval of the previous permits. That required reapplication, and that's why I'm here tonight. Our first recommendation was to separate the property upon which the building is located into a separate lot and to leave the remainder of the property as another parcel for a lot of management reasons. And it would be easy, we felt it would be easier to become completely compliant if we separated it off and made it its own parcel. The, so, the subdivision includes the southern portion as well as a portion in the northern part of the site. The main component of the site plan approval, and when we were meeting with Casey fairly early on, we were talking about how to meet the parking requirements. There's not enough parking space on the south side of Oakdale Brook to be able to support the use of the building that's there. The previous site plan approval included a large parking area on the south side of Oakdale Brook to provide for additional parking capacity. That would have required, and would require, using the existing concrete bridge that crosses Oakdale Brook on the property to gain access to the additional parking. As we got looking at it, we looked at Section 611D1 of your zoning regulations, which allows for a reduction in parking if it can be demonstrated that the uses on the site are not in conflict. The concept is, and it works splendidly here, the apartment build, the apartment use is essentially occupies all of the parking spaces, or most of the parking spaces overnight. But by the time the commercial use comes into play in the morning, those people have headed off to work. And so what we've done with this application is ask to invoke the 50% reduction for the residential parking component, because we feel like it's been, that it's been demonstrated that there is not a conflict with, between the two uses. They're completely, and on the weekend, the commercial spaces aren't open, or the office spaces aren't open. So what we're proposing is to add a total of six parking spaces on the south side of the Brook to bring the parking up there closer to being, well, actually to bring that parking completely compliant with the zoning regulations invoking the 50% residential reduction. In further discussion with the planning office, the question comes up in the, in Section 611D2, says that you have to demonstrate, or you have to provide an assurance that if in fact your plan doesn't work, for whatever reason, and there are conflicts between the parking uses, that you will have a plan to address it. Because the main reason for this is, number one, you don't want people parking on someone else's property. There are developed properties off to the south that have parking spaces, but that's their parking spaces, and there isn't any accommodation for shared parking with them. And the last thing that you want, particularly here, and I'm sure that all of you have driven up and down South Turnpike Road, you don't want people parking along the road, because it's fairly narrow, and the speeds are quite fast, and that, and it's not, that's not an option. So what we did was provided 12 parking spaces on the south side, on the north side of Oakdale Brook, that would be, the stipulation would be that they would, that space would be available to develop those additional parking if in fact, for any reason, it was shown that they needed to be constructed. So we're not planning on having to construct those parking spaces, but they're shown, they're completely designed, and part of, they are on a parcel with the building on it. So we extended the property over to the other side of the Brook. Other things that came up with the comments that we got from Casey on the 29th of June had to do with the fact that South Turnpike Road is a thoroughfare, and the town of Wallingford's subdivision regulations require a 50-foot right-of-way from the center line of South Turnpike Road. The current property line, as surveyed, is about roughly eight to 10 feet toward the street line. And so we made a change based on Casey's comment and added land that will be conveyed to the town of Wallingford to be able to provide that full 50-foot right-of-way along South Turnpike Road. Other aspects of the plan, which went both with to wetlands and to, as part of the site plan, is we're providing a compensatory flood storage area adjacent to the parking lot to meet the town zoning regulations and the wetlands regulations. The, we're showing street trees, pin oak street trees, which is one of the requirements for landscaping. And we've also already, as a condition of the wetlands approval, planted a significant wetlands plants along both the north and south side of Oakdale Brook. And they're there. And we've also set up an irrigation program, working with Aaron, to make sure that they survive. And we're going to wait until the fall and take a look at them. I was up there today. They're doing quite well. They're in the shade, so they're not getting burned out or anything like that. And they are getting watered. Those are the main aspects of our site plan. The other matter is stormwater. The stormwater system, the catch basins were put in. There was supposed to be a stormwater structure constructed and an outlet to the Brook, but they never quite got that far. And the outlet just drains out into the overbank area. And we're going to put in another catch basin and a stormwater, water quality structure, and then discharge to a properly-designed riprap splash pad along Oakdale Brook. So that'll be a big water quality improvement. And we also are going to relocate the dumpster, which is kind of sitting next to the driveway in the northeast corner, southeast corner of the property. And we're going to locate it to a, an enclosure, gated enclosure, at the rear of the new additional parking area. I think that is, those are the highlights, anyway, of the presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Good, thank you. Before I turn to Commission Members and Casey for questions, I believe there was two other items that should have been noted for the, for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We did receive correspondence on Friday, June 30, from Waldo and Associates, Dirk Goss. And it was an email, and a letter was also received, addressed to the Town Planner on July 7, 2017, from Russell Waldo at Waldo and Associates.
Good. Thank you, Ms. Fitzsimmons. So with that, I'll open it up for questions with Commission Members. Any Commission Members with questions for the applicant? Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of questions, and I'm quite familiar with the site. But the question, if I heard you, I just want to make sure I understood you at the beginning. You represent the current owner of the property, correct?
That's correct.
And so the prior approval and the incompletion of the prior approval was, was it known when they acquired the property?
I don't know the answer to that question. They, I was asked to take a look at the property. The first thing I was asked to take a look at was, it also involves all of the additional commercial properties that are down to the south. It's all sort of part and parcel of this row of development. And I was asked, are these properties in the flood plain? And most of them are. And so that was the first introduction that I got to the project. I can, I can say that they weren't aware of the details of the things that weren't completed, because we didn't discover them until we started kicking around in the bushes.
Question through you, Mr. Chairman. Does the applicant currently have a zoning violation?
We, they haven't been cited. We also became aware of the violation when they came in and started asking about it. The major violation is obviously the occupancy of the residential units without having that additional parking completed, and without any sign-offs for any occupancy. But since we knew they were moving forward to attempt to address it, we haven't formally cited them. But they are aware of it.
Okay, thank you. I just, and again, through you, Mr. Chairman, to the Town Planner, the occupancy of the apartments, because I, as I said, was out there just a couple hours ago, do those apartments have COs issued by the town?
No.
No?
No.
All right. So they have an immediate, they're trying to correct it, which I appreciate, but we have a problem where we have people living places that don't have a CO?
Yes. That was the first issue that I raised at, I think, at our first meeting.
Okay. The issue that you referred to in our zoning book regarding common parking, I happen to have my book in front of me. And to paraphrase the regulation, it says, "Commission may reduce the parking requirement by a maximum of 50% for churches and other places of worship, places of public assembly, theaters, nonprofit clubs, bowling alleys, cafes, taverns, restaurants, nightclubs, and other similar uses." So having been out there, I don't see that this is a similar use, because your request for the shared parking, I understand, a church generally used on Sunday and occasionally during the week. This is a residential and an office. And I just, I'm questioning the shared parking request in light of, that's what our rules say.
In reading the regulations and meeting with the Town Planner and discussing, I think that the focus was the other similar uses, and the point being that these are uses that do not have a commonality in the requirement to use the parking. And so while it's not one of the specific items that's listed as examples, it certainly is, they are two uses that absolutely do not have common demand, and therefore, it was determined that this seemed to be an appropriate application for use of that regulation.
All right. And then if I could continue, number two says we would require, we could require some documentation. So when I was out there, the parcel, the parking designated to the right closest to the bridge was all tagged and flagged for the current office use in the first floor. So is there an active parking problem for the current users of the building?
The answer, the answer is no, based on every time that we've been there. There's always plenty of empty spaces. And at night, the residents of the apartments park in those spaces that are, that say for the office only. But those are, I believe that they don't want people parking there during business hours. And the residences do not. I have never seen, you know, I don't know. I don't check them out. You know, there's never been, there hasn't been a conflict because the business has not been complaining to the landlord.
Right. I mean, I understand, because this is, this is part one of a two-part application. So this is a request for a straight re-subdivision of the site, excuse me, of the site plan, correct?
This is the site plan application.
This is site plan only, okay. The issue I have is, shared parking is common downtown. But South Turnpike is not a shared parking type area. And you noted correctly, I mean, it's a busy road. It's across from a busy theater. I, you know, with people working from home more and shopping from home more, the people, the days of everyone, you know, leaving the house, driveway, 8:00 in the morning and coming back at 6:00 at night, it's becoming blurred, because people are working, you know, much different. So I'm just unsure of the request for the shared parking under this reg, because if your site was in a downtown area, I would understand and could support generally shared parking. On South Turnpike Road for this, I don't know if it's appropriate.
Just as a sidebar, my client has a lot of urban property, and essentially, every single shopping center that they own has shared parking. And they're very, very used to it. I guess the point here is that we, based on everything that we have seen, do not feel that it should be necessary to put in 12 parking spaces on the south side of Oakdale Brook, because it will be expensive, and we don't believe that anyone will use them. So we were hoping to be able to use that section of the zoning regulations with a commitment that if there, for any reason, there is evidence that they need to be built, they will be built. They're part of this property, and we have the capability of building them. We just don't feel that it's, it should be necessary at this point in time. We're building, we're putting in six additional spaces on the side where the people want to park. And we just don't feel like putting 12 in on the other side is, should be necessary. That's, that's our position with regard to the application.
Right. If I could, one last thing. I mean, I think you're aware of the history of the parcel, because you kind of did it in your application, because back in 2010, a zone change, then a special permit were approved. Both the parking, which you're asking us to now potentially put off, and the residential were key to that approval. And they weren't done. So now you're taking, you have the residential use, and now you're asking us to, to delay the parking, which was required in 2010. Right? I mean, well, let's make sure we're, the record is clear. In 2010, the parking was required. And so that's one of the things that wasn't done. Is that correct statement?
Based on my understanding, the approved site plan showed parking on the south side of of the Brook. It was not, that was one of the items that was not completed in the approved site plan.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. Other commission members? Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, just to follow on with Jim's line of questioning, be frank about it, in my opinion, 50% reduction in residential parking seems a bit extreme. My question is, you know, how many of those units are currently occupied at this, this point? Are they all occupied?
Based on my understanding, there are no vacancies.
So, you know, if you're not seeing any parking issues and it's full, I guess most likely there's not going to be.
We've been there on the weekend, we've been there during the middle of the day, we've been there in the evening. I was there just before I came over here. The offices were closed, and there were a few people from the, you know, few residential users that had come back. But I think I may drive by again on my way home, and I think I'm going to, I'm pretty certain I'm going to find the same thing, that there are plenty of open spaces. And it'll be even better when we add the six spaces that we're proposing on the site plan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Anyone else? Casey, just so I'm clear, the plans that are being presented now with the reduction, with the addition of the six spaces and with the, with the shared parking, that would then comply with the parking requirement. Is that correct?
Yes, if the sharing was approved.
If the sharing, if the 50% sharing was approved.
Yeah.
Okay. And again, I think Mr. Cohen asked, really asked my question as far as the occupancy level at the, you know, at the project right now. And I take it the commercial space or the office space, that's all fully occupied too? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And I guess I would have, I wouldn't guess, I would certainly have significantly more questions for you had, if you were the original owner of the property, because I think all the commission members here are certainly very disappointed to see what happened at this site and how it didn't comply. I understand your, your client bought the site in 2016 and now, you know, looking to bring it into compliance. I will say, though, I share some of the comments that Mr. Fitzsimmons had with respect to the, with the parking and the shared parking, and especially the shared parking in this, you know, in this particular area. I think as Mr. Fitzsimmons mentioned, in, you know, in many cases, the shared parking more is in the, you know, more in the center of town. And, you know, also looking at the, at the regulations for shared parking, I believe as Mr. Fitzsimmons pointed out, I'm not certain that this would really, would qualify, you know, would qualify for that. And also looking at the fact, when this was, you know, initially approved, we did not have the, you know, the shared parking. So, you know, the shared parking is, you know, is being provided now, or is at least being asked for. The idea of having the, let's call it that satellite lot, and if there's a need for that to be developed, in some ways, the onus really becomes part of the, it really falls on the part of the town. You know, to look at that and say, I think you need to develop that lot because there's not sufficient parking there, and frankly, I don't think the town is really in a position to, you know, to monitor that. So I would have a, I guess I would have an issue with having that, what I would call the satellite lot, have that for future use rather than simply having that part of the, you know, part of the approval. But those are my comments.
Just as a, as a response to that, and I sort of alluded to it, having had experience with, with properties and tenants of properties, if there's a problem, the tenants are very quick to let the landlord know, and if the landlord doesn't satisfy them, they come to the town, and the town has the complete authority, if there was ever a complaint by anyone in this property, to say, "We've been, we've received a complaint from someone who's having difficulty finding a parking space when they come to work in the morning," or they're, you know, the owner of the business is upset because his employees aren't able to find, you know, parking spaces. It would be able to be invoked, and a condition of approval would require that the parking be installed. I just, our hope is that since we're confident that there hasn't been a problem, that property's fully occupied, we're adding six spaces on the side of the, of the site that, where the people want to park and will park, and we do not believe that those 12 spaces are needed based on the performance of the site. And it really seems like it's sort of an unnecessary expense to have the applicant, who has a lot of other things that he's got to clean up in terms of the site that he took over. And so we were hoping that we'd be able to get a deferral on that parking.
I appreciate that. Any other members from the commission? Casey, comments that you may have.
Just a couple of things. One, I just wanted to point out, I'm not sure if Mr., maybe I missed it, if Mr. Sonnixson touched on this, but the compensatory storage for the floodplain, just because that's a newer requirement in your floodplain regs, essentially for the amount of fill that's being brought in to improve the property, they, someone is required to remove that same amount of material so that you're not increasing the overall flood level. Those calculations have been provided for and done. So that's the sort of circular area adjacent to the addition to the existing parking, proposed addition to the existing parking area that looks somewhat like a retention basin.
We, just to answer that, we looked at it, your point was well taken, there's a very small area of the additional parking space that falls into the floodplain. And we expanded, rather than, than trying to excavate another hole on the other side of the stream, we expanded the existing proposed to add that additional compensatory storage.
Okay. So if it, if the future park, if the parking were designated as sort of potential future parking on the other side of the Brook, the compensatory storage would already be installed?
We already have it on the south side of the Brook.
Great, okay. And then, and I just wanted to sort of bring the commission's attention to that. Second, sort of, and this is maybe just my comment, but we talked about this a little bit, there was an area, there was that one parking space that I had some concerns about, that's since been converted into a loading space, but I do think the commission should just make sure you're okay with that. I mean, does that loading sense make, as a loading space, does that make sense for their tenants?
There's.
Does it even need to be there?
This is slippery slope. The regulations very specifically say that there does need to be an area that a delivery truck can locate itself outside of the travelway. That fits that bill. You are correct, it is an awkward space. And we felt that designated it as, designating it as being a loading space would address the loading issue.
Yep.
The loading space, once again, the only loading that's going to be happening, well, maybe when people are moving in and out, maybe a moving truck would be there, but most of the loading and unloading is when the FedEx or UPS truck comes to the office. And I really don't know where they stop, but my FedEx guy stops right in front of my office and unloads, so.
Okay. And then finally, just in response, or as sort of an add-on to some of the comments that were made about the parking, one thought that I did have while everyone was talking, discussing this, is to some, on some level, our provision for sharing of parking, as discussed, is based on the idea that when one user isn't really there, the other users get to use that parking. So perhaps if the commission is inclined to, and like I said, I just sort of thought about this while we were, while you were talking, if the commission isn't, I'm not sure that you are inclined to do this, but if you are inclined to designate the parking area on the other side of the Brook as sort of to be built as needed, there would be two things that I would recommend. One is that that condition be filed on the land, that we file that condition on the land records and directly on the plans. And second, you may want to consider not allowing all of this, all of the existing spaces to be used as, for, for the first floor tenants only. So if the idea is that the sharing is based on the idea that all of the tenants can use the spaces at night when the office isn't being used, maybe that means, or maybe during off-hours, so say from 5:00 PM to 9:00 AM, and on weekends, those spaces have to be available to everybody, or some of those spaces have to be available to everybody. So just throwing that out there, that's all the comments I have.
Okay, just going in the opposite direction. If the commission did not, or was not in favor of the shared parking and required that those 12 spaces be built, then that would comply with the parking requirements, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear on that. Okay, thank you. Again, this is not a public hearing, but we always give members of the public the opportunity to speak on an application. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment on the application? If they are, please come forward and name an address in your comments. Seeing none, I'll bring it back first to the applicant, if you'd like to make any final comments, and I'll go to the commission for any final comments that people would like to make.
The only, the only final comment that I have is regarding the shared parking, surprise. Another option, and I understand a concern, certainly putting the restriction on the land records would be one thing, but there are other mechanisms that could be used that would allow the deferral of the parking and still protect the town, such as a bond of some nature, that would assure that the monies would be available to put that parking in place if, in fact, the need arose and, for whatever reason, you didn't get the response that you were hoping from the, from the property owner. So that, that's just another, another option that I, that might sort of come halfway, not having to spend all the money on the construction, but putting things in a position that there be little question about the fact that it could and would be constructed if, in fact, it was needed.
Thank you. At this point in time, I guess I would just ask for commission members any final comments they would make, and I think the major, I don't say the major issue, but probably the one issue here is with respect to how people feel about the shared parking. Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to, if I could ask the applicant through you one more question, because I'm sitting here looking at the maps, and, and there was a question from the town planner on June 29th, and you responded, and her question was regarding some modifications to the plan. She specifically talks about accessible parking space dimensions, and I, I'm looking at the map for handicap parking. I see two on the map, LS1. Are they there now, or is that part of your proposed handicap? I gotta tell you, I didn't, I didn't notice it when I was there, and I, because I know parking is an issue, it's tight, but I did not note that these handicap spaces were there. And Casey, your letter asked to see it, and the response was, "The survey will be amended to include blah, blah, blah," but it's not what I'm looking at. So if we're, we're counting spaces, and the handicap spaces appear to be the same dimension as the other one, to be a full ADA compliant handicap space, you're going to lose other spaces. So I just, I want to make sure I'm clear what's there, and is this, is this map what's proposed?
Their, their sheet LS, the LS1 on the, on the most recent set of plans that you got, does show compliant dimensions for handicap spaces, the 10 feet and then the five-foot striping. I can't remember either from being out there, whether or not, I don't believe those, one of them, the one behind the building, might be there, I don't believe the other one is there, but I wouldn't swear to that. So as proposed, they would, they would be compliant.
The, I don't believe that the wheelchair's in that space, but there's a cross-hatched area adjacent to it, which would be part of the handicapped space. So I, you know, that was, I'd be surprised, in all candor, and I hadn't, I hadn't noticed, but we do show completely handicapped accessible spaces with all of the dimensioning on our LS1 plan, which is the landscaping plan.
It, it does look like, Mr. Fitzsimmons, it does look, based on what the survey shows, it looks like essentially, right, one of the spaces gets moved, and then the other one, because the crosshatch for the walkway to get over the bridge is so wide, they narrow that in order to widen out the parking space, make it handicapped accessible.
Mr. Chairman, through you, I guess your question to us is the, the shared parking. I, I'm generally pro-trees, pro-sidewalks, and pro-parking, which, which puts me, puts me in a conflict in this one. I applaud the applicant because I understand they want to correct what they have, they want to correct what they purchased because it wasn't done correctly, but I cannot ignore the fact that it was required back, you know, 10, seven years ago. I'd like to see the parking, so I am not in favor of their request for shared parking.
Other commission members? Mr. Cohen?
I'm not really in favor of it either at this point, however, I think I'd be okay with having, you know, the additional 12 spots as a, you know, future, as a condition of approval, if there are any, you know, problems.
So you'd be in favor then of the shared parking?
Well, with, with the condition of approval, stating that, that, you know, extra 12 have to be built if there's an issue.
Mr. Benoit?
I would agree with both of my colleagues here. I don't necessarily think that future parking is something we want to do, but I do think the other parking we should have done.
Thank you. So at this point in time, unless there's any other comments by commission members, I'd ask for a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve application 214-17, a site modification to the plan for a previously approved special permit to modify the parking arrangement and allow associated site changes for the mixed-use building at 90 South Turnpike Road, as shown on plans entitled "Proposed Re-subdivision of Property of Adams Landing Property Development LLC and Site Plan Number 1, 7690 South Turnpike Road, Wallingford, Connecticut, dated January 26, 2017, revised July 6, 2017, subject to compliance of the Wallingford Town Planner's memo dated June 29, 2017." Do we need any bond or anything?
Yeah, what, depending on what you decide about the parking lot, I'll calculate a bond as long as the applicant's agreeable to that.
When you say what, as far as what we decide on the parking lot?
Whether it has to be constructed or not.
The motion didn't include shared parking.
Yeah, no shared parking.
I think we should clarify because the, the plan shows, shows it as parking, I believe shows it as parking to be construct, that's fine, but I just, in, in the motion, I think we should clarify one way or the other. And so if, assuming that the entire parking lot does have to be constructed, I'll, I'll calculate an S and E bond based on that.
Sure, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Benoit, but that was your intention?
Correct.
That the parking lot would need to be constructed. That's why he eliminated from the motion the, the language with respect to shared parking. I believe that's.
Correct. That's exactly what I was saying.
Sorry, that was my fault. Okay, so bond to be determined by the town planner.
What's that?
Bond to be determined.
Okay, and bond to be determined by town planner.
Did you say you're clarifying the motion that there's no shared parking?
Yeah, clarify the motion, there will be no shared parking on the plans dated July 6th.
Parking on these to be constructed.
I'm sorry, what?
In the 12, in the 12 space.
Those 12 shared. Those 12 shared parking spots, correct?
The 12.
12 parking spots, not shared parking.
The shared, say it again?
It's just the 12 parking, parking lot with the 12 spaces to be constructed.
Yeah, the 12 parking spots need to be constructed.
Good. Okay, we have a motion on the application. Is there any questions or need clarification on the motion? Mr. Fitzsimmons.
I, I apologize, I just, I wanna be clear. I, I heard it, but the question is through you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, absolutely.
Is it appropriate to ask as a condition of approval, a time constraint on when the applicant is required to get COs for the people who are living there without COs? Is it possible to make it part of this application? Only because, I mean, the, you know, it's not a good situation not to have a CO. And I'm thinking of all the homeowners that show up with a accessory apartment, and we say you have to get inspection, you have to get a CO, this is, this is different. I'm not sure if it could be added as a condition.
Yeah, typically, the C, I don't sign off on the CO unless the work, site work is done, which is what happened here, so I would say, my answer would be, well, they can't get a CO till the site work is done, and that's based on the state statute, which is the five years. I think perhaps the thing to do is to refer the issue to the building official that there are units being occupied without a certificate of occupancy.
Thank you. Again, we have a motion on the application. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cohen. Voting beginning with Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
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 And yes. Application's been approved. Now we're going to move on to our public hearing, which is the resubdivision. It's a resubdivision, two lots, Adams Landing Development LLC at 90 South Turnpike Road. And again, Mr. Fitzsimmons, if you would please read the legal notice and then note all correspondence for the record, if you would.
Mr. Chairman, the Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission will hold the following public hearings at the meeting of Monday, July 10th, 2017. Application 102-17, resubdivision of two parcels for Adams Landing Development LLC at 90 South Turnpike Road. Correspondence received at this office from the fire marshal dated May 10th, 2017. Of course, an email was received to, to the town, addressed to the town planner from Walden Associates dated May 19th, 2017. Correspondence was sent from the town planner to Adams Landing Property Development dated June 29th, 2017. Correspondence was received at this office from Eric Kruger, Wallingford Water and Sewer Senior Engineer, dated June 1st, 2017, and two other pieces. And previously, also correspondence received from Walden Associates dated July 5th, 2017, addressed to the town planner, and another email was received from Walden Associates dated Friday, June 30th, 2017. That's all.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. And again, if the applicant would please reintroduce himself and get his presentation.
Thank you. Good evening again. My name is Robert Sonnix, and I'm a registered professional engineer in the state of Connecticut. I'm a principal with Walden Associates. Our office is in Guilford, Connecticut. I'm here representing the applicant, Adams Landing Property Development LLC, and this is a resubdivision of a piece of property located with an address of 76 to 90 South Turnpike Road in Wa, here in Wallingford. This will be brief because we went through essentially everything in the site plan application. Originally, we were going to use the, the brook as the center line of the brook as being the, the property line to separate, it seemed like a logical place to separate the parcel. The main goal here is to, to make the existing building be on its own parcel of land. And in, as we were going through the parking exercise and, and trying to find where we'd be able to add additional parking to make the existing building parking compliant, we found that the, the only place that was available was on the, the north side of Oakdale Brook, and so approximately a quarter acre of land in the parcel one, which is what we're calling the parcel that the, the existing building is on, will be located on the north side of the Oakdale Brook, and it will continue to be connected to the remainder of parcel one by a concrete bridge which spans the, spans the brook at approximately the middle of the, of the NX parcel, I'll call it, NX piece of the property that's located on the north side of the brook. So that's the way that the geometry of the lot was created. The other thing that I commented on before was you will see clearly that we have added a strip along the east side of South Turnpike Road that will be conveyed to the town of Wallingford to be able to meet the subdivision requirement that there be a 50-foot right-of-way deeded to the town along a thoroughfare in, in town. So that, that's an additional strip of land that, that the town is gaining as part of this subdivision application, and the remainder of the subdivision does meet all of the underlying zoning requirements for setbacks in building lines and having enough space, and the coverage is fine, and we feel like it is an appropriate subdivision to gain your approval.
Thank you. Commission members, any questions for the applicant? Casey, I, your, as far as your comments?
Two comments. One is, why is the deeding of the portion of the right-of-way only shown on the one parcel? It's required to be for the whole thing.
That's a, a good question, and we've had a lot of discussion about it in the office. The fact of the matter is that future section two is not a building lot at this time, and the primary reason that it's not a building lot at this time is because of the restriction that's been placed on it by the sewer and water division. We, until the sewer is constructed, we're not going to be able to do anything with this piece of property, so we can't lay it out as a building lot.
We've had this discussion internally at great length, and that does not make it not a building lot. It means it's a building lot subject to a condition, a potential condition of approval, and if you're not inclined to comply with the subdivision regulations, I, I think that is a concern.
We'd be happy to make it a condition of approval that that additional land be added to the subdivision plan.
Okay, I would encourage that.
Thank you. And that was something, again, correct me if I'm wrong, you had that discussion also with our corporate counsel, is that correct?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And then the other question I have is actually about the, and it's not really a question, it's a comment that I just wanted to point out to the Planning and Zoning Commission and for the record, regarding the water and sewer requirement that you referenced. Essentially, the, the history is when the building on, the, the existing building was approved, there was a requirement that certain upgrades be made for the, for the water and sewer division, but it was dependent on some work, basically, the water and sewer division said, "We don't, we don't, we're not gonna require you to do the work until we do some work first that we're going to do." So that sort of all got pushed back. So over time, this building was allowed to be built and, and built all the way out by the water and sewer division with the understanding that anything to be done on, anything else to be constructed would require that those improvements be done. So that doesn't have to be made a condition of the subdivision approval per se, you may want to note it on the record, but it will become a condition at the time of a site planner's special permit approval.
Thank you. Again, this is a, a public hearing. Any members of the public who'd like to speak on the application, please come forward, state your name and address in your comments. Seeing none, I guess I'd bring it back to the applicant, any final comments, and then the commission. Again, don't, you certainly don't feel compelled to make additional comments if you've, if you've, if you've.
I have no comments.
There you go. Any commission members who'd like to make any final comments before I entertain a motion to close the public hearing? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we close the public hearing for application 102-17.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cohen, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, and at this point in time, I entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve Adams Landing Development LLC resubdivision, application 102-17, a resubdivision, two lots for Adams, Adams Landings Development LLC to divide the existing lot of 7690 South Turnpike Road into two parcels, one with the existing mixed-use building and associated parking as modified, and one vacant, as shown on plans entitled "Proposed Resubdivision of Property of Adams Landing Property Development LLC and Site Plan Lot Number 1, 7690 South Turnpike Road, Wallingford, Connecticut, dated January 26, 2017, revised to July 6, 2017, subject to compliance with Eric Kruger, Senior Engineer of Water and Sewer, memo dated June 1st, 2017."
We have a motion on the application, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cohen, voting beginning with Mr.
Do you want to include the, that modification to the plan to widen the right-of-way for the other, for the rest of the lot?
Subject to the final plan of the fif, showing the 50-foot right-of-way.
Good. And we have now a motion on the application, do we have a, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cohen, voting beginning with Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
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 And yes, application's been approved. Have a good evening. This brings us to our next item, which is a, it's a public hearing, it's a special permit location of use for Jay Amateo at 20 North Plains Industrial Road, unit number 11. And again, Mr. Fitzsimmons, if you would please read the legal notice and note all correspondence for the record while the applicant begins preparing for his presentation.
Mr. Chairman, the commission will have the, hold the following public hearing, application number 407-17, special permit location of use for Jay Amateo to permit a dealer's and repair's license at 20 North Plains Industrial Road, unit 11. Correspondence was sent from the, this office, addressed to Joseph Amateo regarding special permit application 407-17. Correspondence was received from the office of the Wallingford Fire Marshal dated 6/15/17. Correspondence was received from Senior Engineer, Water and Sewer, dated 7/6/17. That's all we have.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. Again, before the applicant begins his presentation, you can see now there's only three members of the commission here this evening, so which means in order to have a favorable action on your application, you would need all three commission members for that. So again, you have the option, you know, this evening to either go forward or to defer to the following. Okay, and I do have a question. The plans that you just gave us today, how do those differ from the plans that we already have?
I'm sorry.
The plans that you just provided to us this evening, how do those differ from the plans that we have given to us prior?
No, they don't. There's no, the last ones that were submitted were a 6/14/17 revision, those we already had.
So these are the same plans, is that correct, Casey?
I don't know what you have.
The revision is 6/14/17.
Let me, let me, hold on, give me one second.
The only reason why I'm asking you is because I, I think as you're aware, we have a procedure where we don't accept any plans to be presented to us at the day of an application, and I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Casey, when I'm looking at these plans, I think the only change is just a heading that says "Property for Special Permit Application" at one block, I believe.
I don't have a copy of the one that's in front of you.
Okay. I just wanted to make certain that there hasn't been any change on the plans, because again, you're, I think, well aware of what our requirements are. So with that, please introduce yourself and begin your presentation.
For the record, my name is Robert Amateo. I'm a professional engineer and licensed land survey, excuse me, surveyor with Design Development Group, offices at 458 East Main Street in Meriden. This application, we were here, I believe, two years ago with the same application further south on Turnpike Road for a dealer's license. My son established a, his business down there. Fortunately, we needed more, he needed more space, so we tripled the space from what we had previously down on South Turnpike Road to this location up here, approximately 12,000 square feet, incorporates everything into one building as opposed to two buildings. Same operation, we have more parking than, than is required out in the front. We're replacing a business that was Northeast Steel Company that sold steel wire. Their parking requirement is basically the same. Parking for the entire site hasn't been changed with our use in here. We don't require any parking outside. They're high-end cars, they're not gonna be left outside overnight. Matter of fact, hey. We have more than enough space, as you can see on the diagram here, for cars to be internally in this, in the enclosure. It's, this application we approved as opposed to the one we had on the street.
Good. Thank you. Commission members with, any questions for the applicant? Casey, any questions? And I guess there was just one comment, and I'm not quite sure who that was from as far as just needing the, the fit-out plans. Was that from the, I believe from the?
Water and Sewer Division, yeah.
Okay. Okay, good, thank you. This, again, this is a, this is a public hearing. If there's any members from the public who'd like to comment on the application, please come forward, name an address, and any comments. Seeing none, bring it back to the commission for any final comments that commission members may have, and if there's none, if the applicant has any final comments. Good, okay.
That's about it.
Good, thank you. So at this particular point in time, I entertain a motion to close our public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions, I'll entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve a special permit for Amateo to allow automotive dealer and repair use at 20 North Plains Industrial Road, unit 11, as shown on plans entitled "Site Plan GT Motor Cars LLC, 20 North Plains Industrial Road, Wallingford, Connecticut, dated April 24, 2017, subject to the following conditions of approval. Comments from the fire marshal be included dated June 12th, comments from the engineering department dated June 12th be included, and water and sewer comments to be received."
Do we have a, we have a motion on the application? Do we have a, a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, application's been approved. Have a good evening. Brings us to our next item, which is a special permit, it's a fill excavation stockpiling for General Electric at Times Fiber at 358 Hall Avenue. Again, Mr. Fitzsimmons, if you'd please read the legal notice and note all correspondence for the record.
Mr. Chairman, the Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission will hold the following public hearing, 408-17, special permit for General Electric Times Fiber to permit excavation and filling of earth materials in conjunction with a soil remediation project at 358 Hall Avenue, Wallingford. Correspondence was sent from this office to General Electric dated June 27, 2017. Correspondence was received from the- was received from the Water and Sewer dated June 3, 2013, correspondence was received from Water and Sewer at this office dated June 29, 2017, correspondence was received from the Fire Marshal's office dated June 15, 2017, correspondence was received from the Environmental Planner dated June 22, 2017, an email was received from Arcadius on July 3, 2017, correspondence was received from Arcadius on July 3, 2017, additional correspondence was received July 5, 2017, at this office, from the folks at Arcadius, additional correspondence and an email was received from Arcadius on July 5, 2017, and a memo was received from Eric Kruger, Senior Engineer, Water and Sewer, to Casey Costello dated July 6, 2017. That's all I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons, if the applicant will please introduce themselves and begin their presentation.
My name is Lou Streeter, I'm with General Electric, so the applicant, and I'm just going to take a minute or so.
Sir, if you could just pull the microphone just a little bit closer to yourself, if you would, please.
Sorry. General Electric, I'm Lou Streeter, and I'll just take a minute or two to introduce these folks I brought with me, they're from Arcadius, and I'll turn it over to Phil Batten, who's the, the engineer of record that, and he'll explain the project, but, but we've got several people here because there are different aspects of the project, weren't sure if you'd have questions, but, you know, certainly that's why we've brought everyone here, so, Phil, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure. Hello, my name is Phil Batten, I'm a design engineer with Arcadius and representing GE on this project. What I'll do first, if I can, is just give you an overview of the project work, so you have an understanding of, of what we're going to be conducting. Generally, the, the project includes excavation of four areas of the site to remove impacted soil materials, followed by paving of a portion of the site, which would be partly within the excavation area and partly outside of the excavation area. The additional repaving would be basically a maintenance aspect to bring into agreement the, the new asphalt area that we would need to repay for remediation with the existing pavement. In addition to the excavation work, one of the excavation areas is going to have an engineered control installed as part of the work, the area is fairly small, it's 28 feet by 28 feet, and it's going to require removal of about 18 inches of soil, and then placement.
Yes. Perhaps if your, your companion here could point out on the plan, just for people who maybe, you know, maybe, you know, watching this on television, or even for some of the people in the audience, in the audience here, so they're familiar specifically what areas you're talking about on the plan, so if you could point that out, that would be very helpful, thank you.
The four subject areas are, and I'll go to, I'll refer to them by their names, there's AOC 2, AOC 4, AOC 17, and AOC 1 and 13 combined, and there's, these are two very small excavation areas, this is also an excavation area where the EC is going to be installed, this is another small excavation area here, and then the, the largest of the four is going to be right at the periphery of the parking lot, that abuts the wetland area, the Quinipiac, right here. For the engineered control, as I indicated before, it really is requiring 18 inches of soil removal, followed by the installation of a geomembrane liner, and then restoration with a grass surface cover, and there's going to be a drain outlet pipe that's going to be installed down to an existing drainage path. This excavation area, AOC 7, is currently within a paved area, that pavement will be removed and the excavation will be completed and restored back to a paved working surface. For AOC 4, this one location to the north is currently a paved area, and similar to this, the pavement will be removed, the excavation will be conducted, and the asphalt will be restored. This small area is next to a piece of equipment adjacent to a small retaining wall, similarly, that small excavation will occur, and then it will be restored back to its existing condition. For this excavation here, the majority of it is within the paved limits, so similarly, the pavement would be removed, material excavated, and then restored with pavement, again, to its current elevation. There is a fringe area that borders the wetland, and there's, there is a small inclusion of the wetland area, less than 600 square feet, and that would be removed and then restored back to its current condition, so.
If, then if you could also just talk about your stockpiling, because you have an area where you're stockpiling, which is behind the building, is that correct?
Yeah, so there's one area designated that we've identified here that is either going to be used for material stockpiling or for equipment storage, the other area that we've identified is over in the, the parking lot that's opposite the river, it's outside of the floodplain and floodway, that area would be used really only for equipment or new construction materials, but not for impacted material storage. Materials that are excavated would either be direct loaded into trucks, or would be loaded into roll-off containers and stored outside of the floodway until they could be picked up, and we would expect that that would be a fairly timely, you know, orchestration.
Well, when I'm looking, if I heard you correctly, you'd indicated that the stockpile and temporary storage area was on the, on the, I, I saw that, and, but then on the, would be the east side of, of the Quinipiac River, correct?
Right.
And when I'm looking at your plans here, at least at what we have, it says, you know, temporary lay-down and stockpile area, that appears to be on the west side of the, if I'm looking at it correctly, on the west side of the building, really right behind the building.
And you may have a, I'm not sure which figure you're looking at.
If you look on your attachment 3H, the last page, is where they made the modification.
We had provided a revision to figure 3, I think it was, yes.
You just bear with me for a second, please. All right, now we're all on the same page. There you go.
Yeah, so we, the original figure that we had, we were showing some usage area in here, we've eliminated that.
Okay, and again, this storage area with respect to the parking lot, that would be in the, the westernmost portion of the parking, I guess it would be the southwestern portion of the parking lot, is that correct?
This one here, yes.
Yeah, that's, okay.
And again, that would be for, you know, new construction materials, equipment, whatever, we're, we're going to be, you know, working to accommodate the operations at the same time, so space, you know, will need to be economized, so we may have, you know, to store some materials over here and bring, mobilize them as we'd need to for installation. I don't expect that it's going to be a lot of equipment or materials, but.
Just off, clear, so when you're saying material, you're not talking about any material that's excavated, is that correct?
That's correct, right.
So it's just material, material related to the, the constru-
Restoration.
The excavation or whatever?
Right.
Okay, good, thank you. Is that the, the summation of your presentation, or do you have other?
I don't know if there's.
No, I think that's, that's it.
All right, good, Commission members, questions for the, for the applicant on this application? Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, just a couple follow-on questions, as, as far as the stockpiled materials, from, you know, what, what kind of timeframe are you going to have for that material to be in place? I mean, how, how long will it be in those, those areas approximately?
Very short period of time, with, particularly with these two areas here, the, the proposed plan is that we would create the excavations and then backfill them, you know, at the same time, to the extent that we, that these excavations would impact usage of this area, there may be some fringe areas that may not be fully completed, you know, on the same day, for example, but any areas that are within Times Microwave's operational area that they would need to be able to utilize in, you know, fairly short order, we would backfill those immediately, so the excavations would take place and we would backfill those areas right away, so the, the degree of material storage, you know, and the time that they would be on the site would be fairly short period of time. It's a small scale that we're working with, and just to accommodate, you know, the operational aspects of the facility, things would just need to happen very quickly.
And, and what would you anticipate as, as far as, you know, completing the project?
From a timeframe?
Yeah.
It could be two to two and a half months, something like that, probably the, of the aspect would probably be the EC, and only because that's got a little bit more to it, it's not just simply an excavation and backfill, we've got, you know, the geomembrane to install, so. But, and again, just to be able to work with the logistics of, of Times Microwave, you know, it may extend things out just a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen, other Commission members? Ms. Fitzsimmons?
Just to follow up to Mr. Cohen's questions regarding, River Road is, it's busy, it's a busy road, I mean, across the street, the state's had a project there since I was a kid, it seems, and they're, they're reworking the entrance ramp. Can you explain to me the truck traffic and vehicle trips on and off the site, what the route would be?
Well, primarily, the ingress and egress to the site is going to be this location here to access AOC 4, AOC 7, and 1 and 13, for AOC 2, we can access ingress and egress from this location here, that gets, this is an elevated area, these are lower, so.
So you're not going to access the parking lot on Hall Avenue?
To access this?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would only be for any materials that might be stored here, any, anything, again, if it's going to be used in the same day or something like that, it's, it's going to make immediate sense to bring the materials right to where they need to go, so it could be maybe some, you know, a piece of equipment or material that maybe is associated with the liner system here that might be temporarily stored here, since we're going to be tight for space over on this side.
And if I understood your presentation, I mean, it's, it's ultimately, it's a small amount of soil that's being remediated.
Correct.
But it, but it needs to be, so a couple of months is, you're thinking the maximum beginning to end?
Roughly, yep.
Right, what would the anticipated hours of operation of this be? I'm thinking, because I'm thinking rush hour, and I, I don't know, you know, you're not from here, but I can tell you.
Right.
That area is incredibly busy, even before the highway, the state had the highway construction and the relocation of the entrance ramp.
Right, and that could be what's going to affect our, our timeframe, you know, we may not be able to, you know, access in here at 7:00 in the morning, maybe it needs to be a different timeframe, or we can be working on other things that don't involve truck traffic, and that's why, you know, the, the ability to maybe containerize and, and store materials so that our truck traffic could happen at a more timely period of the day.
Is it anticipated, because it's a special permit, is it anticipated to be a five-day-a-week operation, six-day, seven-day? Do you have that information available? Ideal conditions?
Ideally, it'd be normal workdays, normal work hours, but we're still working with Times Microwave on the schedule, we don't have contractor bids in yet, we don't have, there are a lot of logistics still to work through, but we do recognize traffic, we recognize potential impacts, minimizing impacts to the business, you know, I guess the, the short answer is normal business hours, 7 to 5, we may have to work evenings earlier in the morning.
Okay, I, I, I mean, I'd share with you, I mean, I'm not, you know, I understand what you want to do, I just, you're, you want to keep it on your site, but your, your site is located in a really hot area right now, and, and just, you know, getting around over there could be challenging. I, I don't have any problems with the application, I just, we've got to be concerned about traffic, you know, traffic during construction, I, it's a small amount of soil, but I have to ask, because we ask it for other fill and excavation, ultimately, how many truck trips do you think would leave the parcel?
I think we were in the, I forget what the number was on the, that we had calculated, was it roughly 400 or 500 or somewhere, or was it even that much?
The proposal is 369.
It'd be 369, I know it was somewhere, and that includes the, the removal of material, the backfilling of new material, a pavement, those sorts of things.
All right. Okay, just one last question again, Mr. Chairman, through, I'm just thinking, you know, and this is not when Bristol Myers removed half the mountain to build their, but, but if they need, or if it creates a traffic hazard, and again, outside your control, because I'm thinking of the state, would it be appropriate, or could it, you know, as a condition be that they, if they need to engage the local authority for traffic direction, is that something that would fall to them? And I don't know enough, I mean, I've sat in enough traffic because of construction, I'm just not looking to, I'm looking to avoid that, because, you know, getting across town is challenging enough.
Yeah, I think that, my two thoughts are perhaps, one, that you make a condition of approval that we, between myself and DOT and the applicants, that we coordinate to make sure everybody is coordinated and on the same page, DOT, I mean, they're ultimately, they're going to be the, the drivers of the truck, so to speak, but, so that we, between the three of us coordinate to make sure, but ultimately, they'll dictate what, what could and couldn't happen, you know, what could and couldn't happen, and how traffic is getting directed, because they do have, sometimes traffic is getting diverted right now in that area, so that is important, and then the proposal indicates 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM Monday through Saturday, if you had thoughts about how you did or didn't want to limit it, I mean, in some ways, it's better to give them a broader span because it allows traffic to flow a little bit outside of the, the busy commuter hours, but if you wanted to limit that or have concerns about Saturdays, that's certainly within your purview to talk about.
No, I, 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 Casey, I think you, you said the right thing on the record, I mean, giving them more flexibility to avoid the traffic problem, I, I don't disagree, I mean, it just, it's a tough area not through your doing, so, and, and just if I could ask a follow-up, the trucks, are they dump trucks, I mean, I, I, when you talk about 369 trips, what, I'm just curious, so I wouldn't be surprised over there.
Yeah, I mean, they, they would be trucks delivering equipment, you know, so lowboy, flatbeds, or dump trucks, likely tractor trailers, or maybe roll-off containers, but certainly over-the-road, DOT certified, normal.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, just to follow up on that, because I, I think that's a great point, as, as far as a condition of approval, I will make that a condition of approval, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Saturday.
I would not have a problem with that, I think it'd be more beneficial to have this project completed sooner rather than later.
Sorry, thank you.
And Casey, do you have any comments?
Uh, no, I just would note the, the issue, I did speak with our, the FEMA point person at the state, because I had some, I wanted to sort of run by her some of the questions or potential concerns I had about the stockpiling and the storage within the floodway and the floodplain, and we came out on, I think, on the same page, which was essentially that as long as everything can stay out of the floodway, I know it creates sort of an awkward situation for them, where now they have a storage area on the other side, which creates additional traffic going around, but I think we, I, we both felt like that was sort of the safer way to go, and that within the floodplain, what she recommended is that, and I would tend to agree, I think I noted it in my comments, is that perhaps we agree to a time period by which everything be removed from the floodplain, so your, the proposal is for about a three-and-a-half month, month project, so maybe you want to say five months out, by five months out, everything would be removed from the floodplain if that's reasonable for the applicant, from, from beginning to end, from start to stop.
Does that work for you, gentlemen?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, good. And Casey, I just have one question for you, and I kind of hesitate to raise this because it, it's not really specific with this application, but it does deal with the, with a parking lot to the east of Quinipiac Street. lot to the east of Quinney-Piac Street. And as far as with the lighting there, I know there's been, you know, several, it borders a residential area, and there's been, you know, several neighbors that have had, at least made some comments, as far as with the light and light trespass, do the, and again, I realize it's not part of your application, so it's just a question, but does that lighting comply with our regulations as far as the height and the shielding and all of that?
I will look, I seem to recall some sort of application relating to that lighting several years ago, so I will look into it, and I'll go look at the fixtures and make sure.
If you would please, I'd appreciate that. All right, if there's no other comments from commission members, this is a public hearing.
Oh, sorry, just one more thing. I'm just going to ask for a $3,400 S and E bond.
$3,400? Okay, this is, this is a special permit, or a public hearing, rather. Is there any members of the public who'd like to speak on the application? If so, please come forward, state your name and address. Yes?
Good evening. For the record, my name is James Wolfe. I'm a member of the Economic Development Commission here in Wallingford, and we, the Economic Development Commission, has voted to support this application. We feel that this corporation has done their due diligence to take care of the property and take care of any problems that are down there, and we certainly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other members of the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back first to the applicant, if you'd like to make any final comments. If not, that's fine. Thank you. And any commission members who would like to make any final comments on the application before I request a motion to close our public hearing? So at this point in time, I'd entertain a motion to close our public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing for 408-17.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, and I'll entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve application 408-17, special permit for General Electric Times Fiber to permit excavation and filling of earth materials in conjunction with a soil remediation project at 358 Hall Avenue with the following conditions of approval. That the stockpile areas indicated on the Arcatus map, document 3H, to Casey Castello dated July 5, 2017, be included. We have a five-month completion time schedule from start of the project to complete the project. Casey will meet with, Town Planner will meet with Department of Transportation and applicant to discuss traffic planning. Work will be permitted 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday. We will include a $3,400 S and E bond, and I'd like to include the comments from Water and Sewer dated January 3, 2013, comments from Water and Sewer dated June 29, 2017, comments from the Fire Marshal dated June 12, and comments from the Environmental Planner dated June 12, 2017.
So Jeff, this is just, that's the final one for him.
And comments from Eric Kruger, Senior Engineer, dated July 6, 2017.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. We have a motion on the application, and we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, the application's been approved. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
All right, it brings us to our next item. It's old business. It's a site plan for Ripe the Waff Composting Facility at, for Green Envy Products at Sterling Drive. And again, Mr. Fitzsimmons, would you please note all new correspondence for the, for the record?
If I could interrupt, please?
Absolutely.
David Giuliano, 21, Nathan's Path.
Mr. Giuliano, could you please just pull the microphone a little bit closer so they can?
I'm sorry. David Giuliano, 21, Nathan's Path. It seems my learned colleague forgot some presentation material at the office and is en route now getting it, so could we possibly hold off on those and maybe move to?
Tell you what, we will move down our agenda, and you have until the, until the end of, until we reach the end of our agenda.
Thank you for your indulgence.
Not a problem. All right, so it brings us now to, actually, item number five is also relating to that. So we will jump down to item number seven, which is a site plan, expanded natural gas storage for M. Jeremiah at 199-205 Church Street in Yalesville. Again, if the applicant's representative would please come forward to begin preparing for his presentation, and Mr. Fitzsimmons, if you would please note all correspondence for the record.
Mr. Chairman?
Same thing. You're killing me, David.
Same person, same comment, and again, if you would indulge us, maybe move on to new business.
Needless to say, there won't be a Christmas bonus for him, huh? All right, moving down. We'll go to our number eight, which is new business. It's a site plan for 768-square-foot accessory apartment for Stopper at 29 Allison Avenue. And again, if the applicant would please come forward, begin preparing for the presentation, and Mr. Fitzsimmons, if you please note all correspondence.
Correspondence received from the Office of the Wallingford Fire Marshal dated 6:15:17. A memo was received from Eric Kruger, Wallingford Water and Sewer Senior Engineer, dated June 29, 2017, and correspondence was sent from the Town Planner to Mark and Stephanie Stopper at, dated June 23, 2017. That's all.
And again, if the applicant would please introduce himself and begin his presentation.
My name is Daniel Lyon. I'm architect for the project, and the project is for an accessory apartment at the Stopper Residence on Allison Avenue, and with me tonight is Mark Stopper, the owner of the house. The, the application doesn't have any wrinkles in it. Everything conforms. We are in the U40 zone, and we satisfy all the requirements, setbacks, square footage. The accessory apartment, we could have as much as 780 square feet. We're planning 768 square feet, and I, I don't know. Mark, have you got any?
No, I don't.
Excuse me?
No, I don't have anything to add.
Oh, okay. Good enough. Any commission members with any comments? Casey, I have one of your, one comment that you made with respect to the, the storage, and I believe you indicated that that should be, or if it was not accessible from the, from the, from the house or from the primary use, the residence, that that should be counted as square footage for the accessory apartment. Is that correct, or did I misunderstand that?
Yeah, the concern is, or the question is, the calculation for the accessory apartment is based on gross square footage, and so that includes essentially everything. You can, or shared space is exempted in this particular case because it's only accessible from the apartment. I think you need to make a determination, maybe the applicant can comment on it about whether that's actually shared space or not.
And if you gentlemen could please comment on that.
The plan that was submitted has access to that common area from both the existing residence and the accessory apartment?
The second story?
There is no second story.
Just the first story.
No, I think, I think our Town Plan is referring to your plan where you show, you re-show storage on the, on the, in the peak of the addition. So you have that noted as storage?
Yeah, yeah, no, I follow you.
And I believe that was her question.
That's going to be a dead space. That, I'm sorry, it got as far as it did. There's no storage.
So there's no storage there?
No.
So there's no access to that?
No.
It's, as you mentioned, it's a dead space.
Exactly.
That takes care of it, Casey, is that correct?
Okay.
Good. Any commission members with questions? Again, this is a, it's not a public hearing, but we do give members of the public the opportunity to comment on all of our applications. Any members of the public like to comment on the application, please come forward, name an address. Seeing none, I suspect, Mr. Lyons, you probably have no further comments, is that correct?
I don't, Mark, you?
No.
Casey, we're all squared away as far as with you. So in this particular case, I'd entertain, unless there's no further questions from commission members, I'd entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve a site plan for Stopper for a 768-square-foot accessory apartment at 29 Allison Avenue, as shown on plans entitled "Accessory Apartment at Stopper Residence, 29 Allison Avenue, Wallingford, Connecticut", for Mr. and Mrs. Paul Gianfrido, dated June 8, 2017, subject to the following conditions of approval. Comments from the Fire Marshal dated 6:15:17, and comments from the Water and Sewer Department dated 6:29:17.
Can you add remove storage notation on map above?
Yes, and, and also remove the notation of storage on the submitted map.
Okay. We have the, we have a motion, we have a motion on the application. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mr. Cohen.
Yes. Yes.
And yes, your application's been approved. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Our next item is agenda number nine, which is a site plan, multi-flamy conversion to CLB zone, DeCarlo at 143 South Main Street.
And Mr. Chairman, that application is not moving forward tonight, that's being postponed to next month.
Okay. Time's running out on you, Mr. Giuliano. Okay, it brings us now to number 10 on our agenda, which is a survey waiver request for Castro at 174 South Cherry Street. Again, if the applicant would please come forward and begin preparing for his presentation, and Mr. Fitzsimmons, if you would please note all correspondence for the record.
Do you have anything else? I have nothing else.
We have.
Now I have nothing, date number 10.
Casey, all we have is the application, is that correct? Okay, the applicant would please introduce himself and, and his presentation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Miguel Castro. I am the owner of Prestige Construction, is a small construction firm out of Meriden, and Mr. Dave Fida is the owner of 174 South Cherry Street, and he have hire our construction company to, to take down the existing three-story porch that he, that is currently in his property. I have forward information and images and pictures to the commission for their review based on what we are requesting, and we're here to just discuss this matter further.
Casey, we have a, it's a request for survey, I guess, would you please comment on this?
Sure. The property's on a corner, so it has two front yards and two side yards under the zoning regulations. It's in an R6 zone, so, well, I understand that the, it's important that this work get done on the porch, and I don't disagree with that. I do have some concerns about verifying how far off the property line we are, which is really the matter before you tonight. I do believe the applicant had one, one side of the property marked out, perhaps by the engineering department, to determine where that property line was. I think there's still a little bit of question about the other one, and I wouldn't be so concerned, except that it's so close. So there may or may not be variances required, and, which doesn't necessarily dictate whether or not a survey is required. It is only a porch, so you may not be that concerned about it. It is existing, is it being enlarged at all?
No, the, no, it's not.
Okay.
The current footprint is, but it's there, and that's what we are proposing replicating.
So it is, like I said, it is a porch, it is maintaining the same footprint, but, and it likely still needs a variance, but it is very, it's very close, too, so I don't want to run into a situation where something gets approved and then it's somewhere different than where we thought it was.
Okay. Commission members with any comments?
Mr. Chairman, I apologize, I realize this, I'm looking up here, because it came to the commission as a request for administrative approval, and it did have some unique characteristics. I'm, sometimes I'm in favor of a waiver for a survey. This time, I'm not. Because it's so, because of the location of the property, it's not an example where other location surveys, people have had, you know, ample land around them. You did indicate in your, in your letter to us, you most likely would go for a variance anyway. I think we would need to see a survey, so I will not be able to support the waiver request.
The work, anywhere. The town engineers did come out and do the survey and were well within the lines. Yeah, Mr. Fitzsimmons?
The town, I learned this recently at a meeting, the engineering department will only do it, the frontage, it's the survey of the entire parcel, is the, is not an engineering department responsibility.
It's got two fronts, it's a corner lot. I've had one side already surveyed by them, or staked out by them.
Staked, okay.
And then, and then recently, we had the other side, the other front yard staked out. The, the street line is obvious. It's, it matches the sidewalk. The sidewalk goes right up to the line. What we need to do is to replace a porch that's decaying and is a safety hazard right now. It's off that sidewalk, how far, how far off that sidewalk was it?
The sidewalk is seven feet, two inches, so we're missing two feet, eight inches, which is really the, the argument here. We're talking about 13 feet, three inches from the actual structure of the premises all the way to where the engineering department staked out the property. And as the planning director have mentioned, we're not proposing to change the footprint of what is there, we are just going to take what is existing and bring that porch up to par and up to code, which is really what we're planning and proposing to do. The curtain porch right now is detaching from the curtain premises and the surface, which really represents a tremendous hazard. We're talking about two feet, eight inches, we're not changing the footprint. The actual plans that we submitted, they're pretty, pretty comprehensive. I do sympathize and, and hear what your concerns were, or are, but also looking at Mr. Fida's investment out of his own capital. He have invested a little over $47,000 in this project for capital improvement to make sure that he brings this porch up to par. The Fire Marshal has approved the project, he has seen the plans, and as I mentioned, as comprehensive as they are, you know, he does agree that there have to be two egress forms of exit on, on this building. Bringing this building up to par by taking this porch down and bringing it up to code, it is critical. I do understand that there is an additional cost, and that additional cost is going to be coming out of my client's pocket. It's already $47,000 into the project, and he's, have owned the property for 21 years. He has come to the table with the purpose and intended to just do what, it's, it's right. Currently, there's no traffic or, or people coming into this porch because of the current conditions.
And again, we're not changing the footprint, we're just replacing what's already there, and we're making it more safe.
Mr. Fitzsimmons? Mr. Chairman, I, through you, I, you know, and I'm, don't misunderstand, I certainly, I think you have the right intention, it's a safety issue, and that's the right thing. The concern on the survey is, as you indicate, and I, as I just recently learned that the engineering department marks the, the area for the street, we have had situations where when we change regulations to require the survey, is because people think, and again, you're your comments of, we're just replacing it. I don't know that it's where it should be. So, that's why we want the, the survey, because it does denote that the property lines. I still think, you know, if we had something from engineering, because you indicate it's a corner lot, so it sounds like it's unique. If engineering could give us something in writing, that might make sense to continue it, to see what we can get from them. As you know, you applied administratively. Someone, you know, one of the commission members said, I want to have it at a meeting, so it's our opportunity to, to redo. The requirement for survey is for everybody in town, and it's for everyone's protection, future owner and the current owner, and, and to protect the town. So, if there, if you think you can get something in writing from engineering, because it's a unique piece of land related to the fact that it's a corner lot.
Fair enough.
I think that would be very appropriate to, to bring back if, if the majority feels we could continue it.
Yeah, I would certainly support that. I think that's a very good suggestion.
I, I just have a question.
Sure.
Are you, when you say something in writing from engineering, is that verifying the distance from the property lines?
I guess, Casey, and again, it came up a couple of months ago, that you indicate that the engineering department does this from the street line location, however you want to describe it. So, I don't know what we could get from them, because I wasn't aware they did something like this. So, even if they can confirm they've done this particular house, the corner lot, so they've done the two frontages, right? Because you would describe it, and you're right, it drove by, it's a corner lot. So, the engineering would have done two sides of the four sides of the lot.
Okay, so maybe confirmation that, that they've argued that.
That's my understanding, and the porch is on one of those sides.
Actually, just if I can.
Did I hear that correctly?
Yeah, the, the engineering department came out, and he, they have staked out both side and all the way to the back of the actual premises. So, this is what, what they, what they have done, which, when I submitted some of the images which you have in your packet, as I forward them to your attention, it is clear what the distance is between the front porch on one side and also on the other side. So, the distance is cleared. It's only seven feet, three inches, and this is done by the engineering department. So, if you are requesting additional information for them in writing, you know, I'll be more than glad to do that, which will just delay the project a little further.
I think that's what the commission's.
The stakes are still in the ground.
I think that's what the commission's asking for.
To delay, to delay it further.
Yeah. Well, not to delay it, but we're looking for the information from the engineer, uh, from our, from our.
And I understand, which means that we will have to delay until the, the next meeting unless.
Yeah, correct.
You guys have a special meeting that would allow us to come forward.
I think we're talking about our next meeting. Because I, I don't, I don't think that we're going to have a, a special meeting for, you know, for one application, because certainly then we start a precedent, really, for other applicants in the future. And we don't have any workshops that are scheduled until our next, between now and our, our August meeting, so.
Is this a piece of document that you will require to come to your attention that I can actually get from the engineering department that will be forwarded to every commissioner on the commission, and, and perhaps?
Absolutely, any, yeah, that would, much like, you know, all the communication that we get from the various departments, the departments essentially send it to the, to our town planner, and then the town planner disseminates that information to us for our meeting.
Now, would you require another meeting for that, or would, would this information be sufficient?
What we're looking to do is to continue this to our August meeting. Is that correct, gentlemen?
Yeah.
Right.
If, if you do this for a living, I don't, I'm, so I'm.
I don't do this for a living.
I'm confused.
I simply just volunteer.
Okay. So, we get this documentation from the engineering department. What is it that has to be in that letter, assuming it's a letter?
Well, just to clarify, I don't want, I don't think anyone here can attest to what the engineering department might or might not be willing to verify. It's not their job to do, they don't do private property surveys. So, all they do is mark out the street line, because that's what the town, that's marking out what the town owns. They don't do property corners. So, I don't know what they're going, I'm a little, I, I think we need to find out from.
Yeah, I guess, Casey, what, what, yeah, what I guess what I would ask you to do is, is if you could perhaps coordinate with the applicant and the engineering department to let, make the engineering department aware of, you know, our discussions here, what the commission's concerns are and issues, and to see exactly what the engineering department can provide, and hopefully that's something that would satisfy the commission. So, I think with that.
Sure.
I entertain a motion to continue the, continue this application to our August meeting. And the date of that meeting, Casey, is when? Fourteenth? Okay, I'd entertain a, a motion to continue this application to our meeting on August 14th.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to continue the survey waiver request application for Castro, 174 South Cherry Street, to our August 14th meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. And again, I encourage you, as soon as you can, to coordinate with our town planner and our engineer. All right, Mr. Giuliano, you up? Okay, we're back to our old business. It's a site plan for Green Envy Products at Sterling Drive. Again, Mr. Fitzsimmons, if you would please note all correspondence for the record.
Are we doing them both together?
No.
Because of separate.
Okay. All right. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, some of this has been acknowledged in the record back in March, but if I could just make sure we acknowledge it this evening. We have correspondence received from Giuliano Associates, addressed to the town planner, dated March 3, 2017. We have correspondence sent from the town planner's office, dated March 2, 2017. Correspondence received from Giuliano Associates, dated April 7, 2017. Correspondence sent from the planning and zoning office on March 2, 2017, to the applicant. We have inter-office memo from the Department of Health, received March 15, 2017. Comments were received from the office of the Fire Marshal, dated March 15, 2017. Comments received from the environmental planner, dated February 16, 2017. We also received the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, dated February 10, 2017, and we received a brochure regarding, explaining the insurance operation. I apologize, there's no date on that. Give you one second. Then we also have, an email was received by the town planner, dated March 24, 2017. From Linda Reed. I apologize, I don't know where she's from. We also have attachment regarding definitions of composting. I believe that was from the email. We also have correspondence from Department of Health, dated March 15. Comments from fire mountain planner, dated February 16, 2017. Comments from Fire Marshal, dated 3/15/17. These, all those three copies, but they're all different numbers. They're all different numbers, yeah. Office from the Fire Marshal, dated February 16, 2017. Comments from. Looks like Christine Santorion. Did it? Chief Santor, do we have a sanitarian in town?
Chief, Steve Savitelli.
Chief Santor, dated February 21, 2017. I apologize. Correspondence was sent from this office on March 2, 2017. Correspondence was received from Giuliano Associates, dated March 3, 2017. I believe that is it for you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. Casey, just one last thing. Again, did you ask all the department, as if they'd please put their titles down, so we could understand who they're coming from. All right, if the applicant would please introduce himself and begin his presentation.
I'm Joe Jeremiah, 415 Barnes Road in Wallingford.
My name, my name is Zach Georgina. I'm with Giuliano Associates as a project engineer. I'll be going over the site plan and just to revisit everything that's been discussed at previous meetings.
I, I guess if, just I want to make sure, what you're presenting right now, it's with the, the stockpiles. Is that correct? Stockpiling?
Correct, that is correct.
So, I, I know, and before we get too deep into the presentation, when we, I believe at our first meeting on this, and Casey, I'm not sure, when was that? Back in March?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, I think one of the issues was, if this complied with our regulations, our zoning regulations in the IX zone, being that this is processing, and a processing plant would need to be in a building, correct me if I'm wrong, Casey, 25,000 square feet would be the building. I know in the initial presentation, it was mentioned that because the IX zone allows farming, well, that this is farming. You know, we had a discussion on that subject at the first meeting, when we, when we talked about that, and there was some question if, in fact, this was farming. I think there was information was provided to us by the DEEP that this type of facility would be processing. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be farming. I guess it would be farming if, in fact, this was a farm, and then, you know, the manure that was used came from that farm and was processed there. And then also, again, correct me if I'm wrong, Casey, with our zoning, zoning regulations, when it defines, there is no definition of farming, is that correct?
Uh, there is. Let's see, what did we say here?
And I believe the regulations were to say, if it's not defined, we use how it's defined in, I guess, in a dictionary or whatever. And I believe you presented to us, I think, from three different dictionaries, what the definition of farming was.
Right, correct.
You know, which didn't, didn't specify this particular activity. So, I think.
I think that the question was actually agricultural was the word, yeah.
Waste composting.
Yeah. And, again, I think when it came back to us, the agriculture, as far as how it was defined, was not defined being composting. So, I think we're at a point where we need to make, before you go into your presentation, to indicate to us how you, why you feel this complies with our regulations, being processing and not being within a building.
Will do. Before we even begin that, I just, I'd like to request, would it be possible to present to you all to receive feedback, and as there's only three of you, defer a vote until your following meeting, when there's additional members of the board.
I don't believe we can do that, because we're out of time on this application. So, I mean, your option could be to withdraw the application and, and then resubmit the application, but because of time constraints, we would need to, again, is that correct, Casey? We would need to.
Open in March.
Because this was open in March, and there were several continuances that you folks had requested. So, we're at a, at a position where, again, you can go forward with the application, with the commission, or you could, you could withdraw and resubmit.
Yeah, per the statutory timeframes, you're at a time.
At this ti, at this time, we'd like to withdraw, based on that information.
Absolutely. And that also, then we'll go to, because I suspect you'd like to do it on, on the next application, too. So, as far as the site plan for, for Green Envy Products at 90 Tankwood Road, again, you were.
Again, we would like to withdraw.
Like to withdraw, okay. And you'll provide a letter to our town planner on that?
Can do.
Okay, good. Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Uh, just a, a comment. In withdrawing technically, typically based on our, your structure, your deadline structure, they're, they would then be looking to apply by August and be on an agenda for September. Because it's a site plan, if you want to agree to schedule it for the August meeting, you could do that. It's a relatively small agenda, but that's up to you.
How does commission members feel about that? Excuse me. Do we know of other, do we know of other commission members? I hate to run into the same situation, where we only perhaps have three members here. I know Mr. Fitzsimmons indicated that he's going to be on, on vacation or out of town. Do we have any idea as far as other people, Casey?
I don't know. So, you could, I mean, you could follow the normal timeframe, submit for August, for schedule for September.
Let's do that.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen. All right, it brings us now to number, number seven, which is a site plan, expanded natural gas storage, M. Jeremiah, 199-205 Church Street, Yalesville. Again, if the applicant would please come forward, begin preparing for their presentation. And, Mr. Fitzsimmons, if you please note all correspondence for the record.
Sure, of course. Mr. Chairman, correspondence was received at the planning and zoning office, dated July 3, 2017, from Giuliano Associates regarding Gasworks Propane. Correspondence was received June 9, 2017, addressed to town planner. We also have received from the office a copy of the application for a sign permit dated June 25, 1986. We have a copy of the application for a sign permit dated July 18, 1986. We have a copy of a zoning permit from the zoning enforcement officer, dated July 18, 1986. We have a copy of the permit and the $10 fee paid in August 5, 1986. We have an applicant, we have a, a copy of a zoning permit for a wall sign, dated June 25, 1986. Correspondence was sent to the applicant, Michael Jeremiah, 199 Church Street, on May 22, 1977. Correspondence was received from the office of the Fire Marshal, dated May 11, 2017. Correspondence was received to this office from Eric Kruger, Water and Sewer Senior Engineer, dated June 2, 2017. Correspondence was sent from the planning and zoning office to Michael Jeremiah, 199 Church Street, on June 27, 2017. Email was received from Christopher Giuliano, Giuliano Associates, on June 30, 2017. Correspondence was received from the Fire Marshal, dated July 5, 2017. Email was received from Christopher Giuliano, dated June 30, 2017. Email was received from the State of Connecticut Department of Environmental Energy and Environmental Protection, addressed to Casey Castella, Town Planner, June 29, 2017. And correspondence were received from the office, email was received from the office of the Fire Marshal, I can read this, dated June 28, 2017. That is all.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. And again, the applicant the same courtesy as we gave everyone else. Again, there's only three members here, so again, to have your application, you know, approved, you would need all three members. So, you have the option of going forward with your application this evening, or waiting until next month.
We'll go forward.
Good. And at this point, if you'd please introduce yourself and begin your presentation.
Hello, again. My name is Zach Georgina. I'm with Giuliano Associates, 405 Main Street in Wallingford, Connecticut. I'm a project engineer, and I'd like to go over first the existing conditions on the site, and then go into what we are proposing for our site plan for this application. Currently, the site is mixed use. It has the Gasworks office, a Gasworks showroom, Gasworks fill station, a warehouse for Gasworks, as well as a recycling facility and warehouse for G&amp;G, I believe it's G&amp;G beverages. In addition to this, there's also a residence currently located on this piece of property. Moving on to what we are proposing to do, behind the existing showroom, we're looking to relocate a thirty, existing 30,000 gallon storage tank for natural gas, as well as add a 25,000 gallon storage tank.
Excuse me, it's propane gas, just to clarify.
Correct. In addition to that, we are also looking to place two 2,000 gallon tanks where the existing 30,000 gallon tank is located today. In doing so, the existing tank we are bringing in is compliant with Regulation 48B, which states that any storage tank for fuel purposes needs to be under 25,000 gallons for an individual tank. To that end, we are having a custom tank made to meet that regulation. In addition, through correspondence with our town planner, it was requested that we add additional screening to this. So, we have added a screening fence around the proposed new tanks. We will be relocating existing parking place spots. parking place spots that are in the location of the, where the tanks are going to elsewhere on the site. I'm going to go into the parking plan at this time. On site, there are currently 70 parking spaces, of which we are going to be relocating 15 of those spaces and adding five additional spaces to add to a change of use that happened previously and would have required five additional spaces be added to the site. To that ends, we are putting eight spaces located behind the Gasworks showroom, an additional seven spaces located on the back of the G&amp;G warehouse facility, which will be designated by curb stops. Additionally, the five spaces we look to add are going to be parallel spaces along here, which allows still for ample drive space for two-way traffic through that location. At this time, I'd like to open it up for any comments from the commission.
Commission members with comments for the application, for the applicant, excuse me. Mr. Cohen.
What, what kind of fencing is, is around the tanks? And, you know, how, how secure?
I'd like, I'd like to defer the fence comment to our mechanical engineer, just as she's also involved in the safety aspects of this.
My name is Jody Amadon. I prepared the fire safety study, and I work with the construction company Crown Energy. Code requires an eight-foot chain link fence with two doors around the facility. And I believe that's what you have now, is it?
Yes, that, that's what we currently have, and- Sir, if you'd just please introduce yourself, if you can, please.
Michael Jeremiah, 329 Harrison Road, Wallingford.
Thank you.
So, so we, we presently have a 30,000 gallon behind a, an eight-foot fence with multiple access, and as we relocate the tanks, it would, you know, we would do the same thing.
Well, you know, what's, and I'm, I'm sure, you know, you have all the safety precautions and everything. What, what's the distance between the actual fence and the tank itself? I mean, is it, you know, three feet, is it five feet?
Five feet, five feet around the outside.
And current, currently, it's, it's probably 10 feet or something like, something like that.
Is, is, is there a top on this, too?
No.
Or is it open on top?
It's open on the top.
And the entrances, are they typically locked all the time, or?
They're, they're open during business hours, and they're locked at night.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cohen.
Just wondering. Ms. Fitzsimmons?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wondered, I'm not sure who I can direct this to, is, I noted the correspondence. We had a lot of correspondence, or a lot of copies of stuff from the 80s regarding the sign permits. And, you know, we're all familiar with the road, and all familiar with the site and, and the operation. Reviewing the materials over the weekend and, and driving by the site, there's, there seems to be a question, based on the correspondence that was between the town planner and, and one of your offices. Is your position as the applicant, and I'm not, and again, I'm not sure where to direct this, I guess, look at you. This signage is now determined to be in the state right of way. And that, we received correspondence that says it was grandfathered, so because you're before us this evening to make a change, there, there's no grandfathering that, that we, so to speak, do, because you're, it's a new application you're proposing, so we would need everything to be brought into conformance. So I, I question the sign information that, that we have dated from 1986, because now that we have the survey requirement, as you know, that the last person was there, we, the applicant, the property has been surveyed, or the, the map, it shows the signs in not where there should be. So I wonder who, who can comment on that?
Well, I guess I can. Um, I mean, I think one of the issues that came up with is, we put a logo on the side of the tank. It was more for, you know, aesthetic reasons and, you know, makes a nice website, that sort of thing. You know, we, and as we relocate these tanks, you know, we're certainly happy to remove all of that stuff. The sign on the, on out front, that's been there so long, I'm, I mean, what, what are we looking for? I mean, is it, is it-
It's not supposed to be the state right of way.
The, the issue, the issue, unfortunately, and, and again, I mean, I, it said, I'm not going to question the parking or the, the, the sign should not be in the state right of way, and, and it is. So that, that, I can't change that. I mean, the issue is, we can approve a sign to remain in the state right of way. So that, that, Casey, am I correct? That's, that's, that's a short answer. I mean, I, that's the issue, is it appears the sign is in the state right of way.
Yeah, and the commission could never have approved a sign in the state right of way. So there, so there, there couldn't be grandfather, I mean, permits wouldn't grandfather something. Permits would mean it was put in the right place to begin with, which would never be the state right of way. The only way it could be grandfathered is if A, and this is for signage in general, someone can prove that it existed prior to 1958, and B, there was permission granted by the State of Connecticut for that sign to be in there right of way.
Okay. So if we're looking to, you know, remove that sign in order to move forward, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I think we're, it's, relocation, yeah. I think what we're saying at the end of, I'm sorry, Mr. Fitzsimmons, but at the end of the day, I think what we need to do is all your signs have to be on your property, and you have to have permits for the signs. I think that's-
I'm perfectly fine with that.
Yes, Casey, you have?
You only allow one ground sign per property, so we can't give a permit to have two additional. So I think there are two in the right, state right of way, and one on the actual property, so the one on the actual property is fine, but the other two, there's, I can't, there's no way to permit them.
So the other two, the, the ground signs, just so I'm clear, the ground signs that are in the state right of way, the two of those, they have to be removed?
Yeah.
And the one ground sign that's on their property, they have a permit for, so that is, that's been approved.
Right. Or if you wanted to put up to, you know, you might be able to put a bigger one in place of the one that's in the public property. We can talk about that, but yeah.
Yeah. I'm, I'm fine with that. I mean, this, it's a little background on the, this, you know, why we're here, is we, I mean, we put a 30,000 gallon storage tank back in 1987, when we were doing, you know, 150,000 gallons of propane. We do over a million gallons of propane now, and it just is not feasible. And I, I think, you know, from a safety standpoint, you know, it makes more sense that we have a little bit more storage there. You know, if it requires us to, you know, do whatever we have to do with the signs, I'm, I'm, I'm on board with that, because the storage is more important.
Okay. Other commission members? Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Sorry, I-
I won't interrupt you at this time.
No, that's okay. And again, I said, I think that the way it's laid out, I mean, and I'm quite familiar with, with the site and the operation. The, the other question I'd ask, I'll start to my right, is lighting. Just a question had come up regarding lighting, because we require now full lighting, and if I could, looking at notes I have here, there has been some confusion regarding outdoor lighting, which apparently is existing, but doesn't, did not show up in a previous plan. So as you, you might be aware, floodlights are discouraged, but allowed, and they must be shielded. So we are requesting that shielding of the lights be in conformance with our regulations. We, we're looking for lights to be full cutoff. So we, as I said, you've been in town for a long time, so we want to make sure that you're aware of this, and, and there was some confusion, again, similar to the signs. What's the, what's the request regarding lighting? And are you aware of our current regs regarding full cutoff?
Our current plan was no changes to the existing lighting scheme, was to allow that to remain as it is. The focus on this project was to expand to meet current demands for the propane, obviously, and to leave the site as unchanged otherwise. Some reliance striping to make sure the parking is refreshed and clearly defined and such, but to try and have this a, as low an impact on the existing site as possible.
But, Kate, Casey, I just have a question. As far as, just to follow up on the lighting, again, they're not making any changes to the lighting, but when the plan was approved with the lighting, was that prior to the requirement for full cutoff or not?
That I don't, I don't know. I'd have to look at when that requirement came into being. The, the bigger concern, the fire marshal had indicated to me that there might be a requirement for additional lighting. So at the very least, if it's not shown on the plan now, but it ends up being required by the fire marshal, I want to make sure it's the proper, it's fixtures that still comply with our requirements.
So we could make that a condition of approval-
Yeah.
-with the fire marshal requires additional lighting. That would have to be provided, and then it would have to be the, the full cutoff lighting.
Yeah.
And then you'll check, though, if you would, please, just to see when, the original approval, if that was prior to the full cutoff lighting. Anyone else? All right. Casey, any final comments? You did have one comment, I thought, dealing with handicapped spaces. I think you had a comment on that, did you not?
Oh, I had a question. You'll see, what's the best sheet? And I know, Mr. Georgina had, I believe, addressed this, but I just wanted to make sure. The, the handicapped, the ADA compliance space ends up being sort of, sort of funky in shape, because it's a long, sort of a curved area of a walkway, which is fine. I just want to make sure, so it appears that the actual space itself is wide enough for, long enough and all of that. I was just concerned that the crosshatched area narrows out towards the top, and I wanted to make sure that's not an issue for ADA compliance.
You are correct that, good concern, good concern. The active length of the parking space goes all the way to the drive aisle, and using that, we are, we meet the width requirement. It tapers out beyond the required space length.
So the bottom line is you're compliant?
Correct.
Good, thank you. If there's no other questions from the commission, if the applicant has no further comments, I guess I'd-
I have no further comments. I don't know if, either of my-
Oh, well, whatever lighting requirements that the town has put in, we're certainly, you know, more than willing to, to do that. And, you know, I don't have a problem with that.
Good. Thank you. Okay, at this particular point, I might entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve a site plan for Jeremiah to install a new 25,000 gallon propane storage tank, to relocate a 30,000 gallon propane storage tank, and to relocate two 2,000 gallon propane storage tanks, make associated site improvements, and address parking issues and requirements that were previously not addressed as required at 199-205 Church Street, Yalesville. As shown on the plans entitled, Site Plan Proposed Propane Storage Tanks, Gasworks Propane, 199 Church Street, Connecticut Route 68, Yalesville, Connecticut, dated May 5th, 2017, and updated to July 3rd, 2017, subject to the following conditions of approval. Comments of the file, fire marshal dated June 28th, 2017, addressing potential detailed lighting plans be included. Signs in the state right of way are to be removed. Additional comments from Water and Sewer dated June 2nd. Additional comments from the fire marshal dated July 5th, and comments from the town engineer dated May 11th, 2017.
We have a-
And comments from the town planner dated May 22nd, 2017.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. We have a motion on the application. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mr. Cohen, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, application's been approved. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much.
All right, Casey, it's your show now. Take us through the bond releases and all of our other items, please.
Okay. 17 Whiskey Wind Road, the bond can be released. The bond is ready to be released.
So that's ready to be released?
Yep.
I'd entertain a motion to release the bond on 17 Whiskey Key Wind Road, as recommended by our town planner.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to release the bond for 17 Whiskey Wind Road, as noted by the town planner.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, moving on.
Okay, Neighborhood Business District. I don't know how in-depth you want to get in conversation tonight, since there's only three of you. We can talk about it, we can wait, it's entirely up to you.
I don't know, would anybody, anyone like to discuss this, or wait until we have more, more commission members to have perhaps a more fuller and robust discussion?
Robust.
Robust. I think that's what we're looking for, Casey, so if we can, obviously, we're going to skip over the next item.
No, we have a majority now.
Okay. Administrative approvals, you have several of them, so I will just leave it to you, if you have any questions about any of them.
Any questions on any of the administrative approvals? Moving on.
Okay. ZBA, at their last meeting of note, which number is it? Okay, item number four was a request for existing night, existing site nonconformities to remain at 654 North Colony Road. That was for a small, sort of addition at the, the old fireplace store, not that building, but the other little, little building that's also on that property. I believe the intention is to open it for a little, like clam restaurant, clam shack kind of thing.
Was that the, the car rental place?
Yes. So they need a little additional space for their serving, and there are a lot of nonconformities on that site, so. So that's, I believe, the only one of note on there. And then on, for this coming meeting, there is a significant garage special exception request for a total of 3,234 square feet of total garage area, just of note, unless you have any additional comments.
I'm sure if they have, they approve that, they'd have a very good reason why they did.
Sure.
Can I ask a question, Casey, on that one? Comparing, through you, Mr. Chairman?
Sure, absolutely.
Looking at the applicant, the legal notice, that one has two different, why does it have two different numbers? Do they-
One, one is a special exception, that's the size. So garage sizes are always special exceptions. Height is always a variance. Typically, the, the burden of proof is a lot greater for a variance than a special exception, so common, it's relatively common that we'll see the special exception approved, but not the, not a height variance when we see both. That's not always the case, but that's pretty common of the case. And then zoning enforcement law, as always, I will leave open to you if you have questions, comments, concerns.
Any questions on the zoning? Yes, Mr. Fitzsimmons?
I, I have one, and it's not regarding a specific, but it, it's something that we discussed earlier this evening. And I don't know where it's appropriate, Casey. If we're having someone who's appearing before us with a zoning violation, an active violation, I thought we had talked about noting that somewhere. Whether, and I don't remember if it was in the fee structure or in documentation, but I, I think, I, anyone who wants to fix their zoning violations, that's the right thing to do. But I, I'm not sure we're, I'm getting that. I'm getting that flavor of someone saying, you know, I built an accessory apartment, I didn't know, now I'm trying to correct it. I'm trying, I don't know what the, how we ended up there, but do you recall when we had that conversation about whether or not people who are trying to correct a, a violation either pay more or less? I don't remember, but I do remember that coming up during the fee structure discussion.
That's a good, I remember that conversation, too, and we don't have it listed on our fee structure, but I'm going to double check, because I feel like we did decide, my, if memory serves, which it doesn't always, I feel like we did decide that there was an additional fee associated with that. So I will look into that, and if that is the case, we will certainly institute that.
I, I-
Because I think that made a lot of sense.
Again, I, I don't want to ding somebody, but they, they should try to correct it, but I, I seem to remember us saying that we would know-
Right.
-they're appearing before us because they have a violation.
Yep. No, that's, I- Yep. No, that's, I agree with you. And also, there is an added, typically an added element of staff time involved when there is also a zoning violation. I have to do more to get it to the meeting, so.
Thank you. Anyone else with any questions on our zoning, rather, our zoning violations? If not, believe it or not, I believe we're at the end of our, end of our meeting. So with that, if there's no other business, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Fitzsimmons, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, we adjourn. Have a good evening.
Nice job.